All right, good evening, folks. Happy thirty minutes into spring of 2023. My name is Kim and it is my honor and privilege to start our meeting for the Gotten Board of Education Committee of the Whole. It is March twentieth and it is about six oh four.
Four?
I have no idea where that fell along.
You got a twang going there.
I don't know where that came from. Sorry, I'm just putting things away so I don't get confused. All right, um, and, um, for tonight's agenda, we are finishing up our walkabout on about the high school. Um, with the item that I asked if we could, um, put off for one meeting from last week to this week for Matthew. Um, and then we're going to be moving on into, um, hopefully looking at attendance, but also doing our walkthrough. Um, in the elementary world, which would include the reading program. Um, that has had a lot of coverage, not only from the district, but across the state's navigate. So with that said, I would be more than happy to take a.
Point of order?
Yeah.
We didn't review the minutes?
I'm.
Just getting there?
It was coming out of my mouth.
Come on, Kim.
Right. I guess so, um, I will take an agenda, um, I will take a motion to accept the me as a whole meeting minutes of March thirteenth. I've got a second. I got a first, have a second, please?
No, because I have there's a direction.
Second.
We still need to be second.
All right.
To go into discussion. Thank you, William. I've got a second, um, up for, uh, discussion, please. Liz?
I said I would like history to be three and a half, two, four credits. I really would like four credits, not three and a half, but I would be willing to discuss three and a half.
All right. Ms. Joan, did you hear that for the correction?
Yes, I did.
Thank you, friend. Any other just point of discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of moving the minute, the March thirteenth committee, the whole meeting minutes, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Absaying, motion has carried. All right, so, um, Susan, if you could, uh, have us continue the conversation with our high school, um, friends. Um, so I think we're going to be talking about all of these things. So it's more of a conversation. We don't have a slideshow, but I really felt like you needed to hear from administrator and teacher from the high school. About the IB diploma courses, the IB, um, courses that they can either serve as a diploma or they can be taken à la carte. With AP and ECE, which many students do participate in. Um, ECE is the youth con credit. And my understanding is there's a lot of dual enrollment with ECE and AP as well. So it's, we're really flexible, but we've really encouraged a lot of students to participate in these higher level courses. And then a little bit of talk around AP and how we've encouraged more teachers to get staff development through the NMC National Math Science Institute. And we've opened it up to the social studies department as well. And we've taken on that cost through our best, but all the others have been paid from Department of Defense. Um, and then one of the questions we were asked is what courses do students take if they want an honors level in grade eleven and twelve? And since we don't have an honors level, I think it was specifically, the question was for eight for honors English. Um, so I just thought that maybe the high school can kind of go through those different topics for us. And talk about maybe starting with the IB diploma.
Sure.
And the IB courses.
Yeah, and just, uh, just for everyone here in the room also, uh, we have Jordan Paducci here who teaches both AP and IB courses. So you can be able to talk a little bit about kind of the experience of teaching those. Uh, that Matt Brown and Carmine Hodge again here, uh, just in terms of the scheduling piece. And Carmine obviously just finished teaching up some, some IB and the AP courses as well.
I think Matt did in his day.
Yeah, he could talk about the beginning of AP or IB and all that stuff. But, uh, and then Amy McKenna is here on Zoom as well and talk a little bit more specifically about the English, uh, classes as well. But just in terms of the IB diploma program, obviously you've had a big push with increasing enrollment in all higher level courses, not just IB. Um, but we also want to make sure that as we're talking about this, the understanding that we've really gotten is that our families need to know more about IP. Um, you know, it's not that we are favoring IB in any way. Uh, we want to make sure that our families know about all the options that are open to them. And when I've talked to families, it's really simple, you know, most families went, uh, most parents went to a school that had advanced placement classes. You know, I think that pretty much everybody knows what advanced placement is. And even when I had the program of studies night earlier this year, I actually asked parents to raise their hands and say, you know, did you go to a school that offered advanced placement? And then I asked the same question about IB and almost nobody raised their hand. And so it's just a matter of what they know based upon what they already, what they saw in their own educational experiences. And so it's not about like, we want everybody taking IB while we do want students to try IB. Um, but it's not, you know, the IB diploma program is not for everybody. Uh, it's a huge commitment. We want to make sure they understand that commitment and they're really committed to doing that. Because when you talk to a, a, a full diploma student taking six IB courses plus the theory of knowledge, that's a huge part of their academic experience. And if they're not really understanding what that is and really committed to that, what you're going to do is you're going to get dropping out of that program. And that's what we don't want. So we want to make sure we really explain the options that are open. You can do the full diploma, that's great. We got this new, uh, career programming, that's great. Uh, we can also just take an IB course. There's a lot of options out there that students could be interested in and take an, uh, uh, an IB core course. Or they could take something like, uh, sports exercise, science, uh, they could, you know, there, there's a lot of options out there. Um, so we've really worked very hard, starting in November, you know, I, I've got a list of almost everything that we've done this year. Just to educate our, our students. You know, Kelly is Donovan is really working hard to identify students that could be strong IB diplomas, uh, students to be able to talk with their families. And talk with those students about what's the options for them are. We had the program of studies night, which I think was great in terms of introducing not only our current families, but our, our, uh, incoming families about the different programs that are offered, not just IB, everything that we have offered. Uh, we had that taste of IB, uh, which I think you heard about, which was bringing in some of those students and actually having them go through a couple of IB activities. Uh, after school to get an idea of how this is different from a normal classroom. Um, we had this recent IB breakfast where we invited some students in and some fam, uh, some parents came in as well. And just talked about what their options are and talked about the CP programs, talked about the DP program, talked about just individual IB courses that they might be interested in. Um, and just having those conversations with families and making sure they understand what this is all about. Because I think that a lot of what has, um, kind of, I wouldn't say hurt us, but it, it, uh, one of the, 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 uh, the obstacles, the kids taking these courses, they just don't know. Um, and so, and then the, the last piece is starting to educate our faculty as well and having them talk. We had a, we had a, uh, uh, IB in service for our guidance department this year, uh, where they sat down and really talked about the IB diploma program. The best part about that, that training is we brought it to us as opposed to all those trains where people are going out. Um, so it's much more cost effective to bring the training to the school. Um, but to have them sit down with an IB expert and really learn about the IB program and, and things that they, maybe they didn't know before in terms of how those things work. So, um, you know, so it's something where, um, you know, in terms of the difference between AP and IB, I mean, I'll let the experts talk a little bit more about that. But, you know, this year has really been a lot about education, education for our families, uh, education for our staff and, and for our students. So it's, uh, you know, and I think it, it's going to, it's going to bear fruit. And I think it's, you know, we've already got a lot of students that are interested in joining the DP program for next year. Uh, we're excited about that, uh, you know, it'll be a nice cohort of kids coming through. And but at the same time, those kids that maybe aren't doing the full program, maybe they're doing the CP program or maybe they're just deciding it's, you know what, I'm going to try this particular course. And that's okay too. That's great. That's what we were looking for. So that's, that's really where the push has been this year.
You also explained the IB standard level and IB advanced level. And while they still count for Buku points on a GPA and are really recognized. That that really the standard level in math, I know, is really comparable to an honors level. And so, and often is, um, it's, I've even seen the manual and being a math teacher at that level, I was always impressed with the level of problem solving. And how it really included several math and, and really kind of integrated them. But you were the one who taught it. Yeah, I don't know if you want to speak to that.
Yeah, the thing I appreciate, I appreciate about the, the IB, I, I taught about, at that time was called the back studies. Was, was the application piece that you were talking, um, one of the major pieces to the class with their, it's a two-year course. So, uh, in the second year, they worked on a project based on, and they had it at least utilized three to five concepts that they learned that were part of the, the ID curriculum. And apply that mathematics to the projects, um, and the projects were amazing. Anything from, uh, like the expected values of the different properties on a monopoly board versus real estate and mystic and looking at trends. One student, one year did, uh, skirt lengths and predicting the economy based off of it. And they, they actually had a sine curve combined with exponential modeling that, uh, that, you know, so they, they did really great things with those projects. And I thought that that was a, a piece that they'll always remember and, and, you know, how, how they applied it. And, and a lot of the problems are, are real good world prob, you know, real world problems, application as you were talking about. Um, the other thing about the, the IB, at least in the math field, um, there's multiple assessments. So AP is a one-year course, this is, uh, lasts over two years, but there's different assessments, like that project I talked about. Um, they also do multiple papers. So there's a paper one that they would take at the end of their senior year. Um, that's fifteen short, short answer questions, they still detail. And then the next day they come for a ninety-minute assessment that has, has five questions on it, but very detailed and, um, lots of aspects to the problem solve. So, so really, um, I think that was the biggest, biggest difference, you know, uh, was, was just the application piece and, and the extent. You know, they're two-year, you know, over the course of two years, whereas, um, the AP, uh, I, early on in my career, I taught the AP calculus. Um, with, with the support of Mike, Mike Emery at the time, um, and, and that, you know, that, that was over the, at that time over the course of a, a year and a half. Cause they, they met every day and then it was, uh, every other day for, for one year. Um, yeah, lots of, lots of, uh, great, great knowledge in, in calculus, but, but the application piece wasn't as, as detailed. So I think that, that would be the biggest, biggest difference, but all of the very extremely valuable courses, um, at our, at our school. But I hundred percent agree that, that, uh, you know, the, I, I need courses, our honors level courses for, for our upper level classes.
George actually teaches both AP psychology and the IB psychology.
Yeah. And I have a unique setup and I think some other courses are beginning to move, I, I think the setup, um, we have for I think bio, maybe some other courses are moving this direction as well. But it's a prerequisite in order to take IB psychology, you have to take a year of IB psychology prior. So, um, and I remember going for training years ago in, uh, St. Pete's Beach and, you know, the other IB teachers were so jealous. Uh, because like, wow, that's a great setup. You can get through all this content because the, the big difference in my course, uh, IB psych, Navy psych is the depth. And IB psych, you're really, you're getting into studies, you're getting into, um, uh, understanding how these studies work. And like Matt said, there's a ton of authentic assessment, um, just like in your course where they were, you know, doing all these applications in the community. Uh, my students are, they're internal assessment, they have to replicate an actual psychology experiment that was carried out. Um, so certainly different in breadth and scope. I do know this, though, the college board, uh, Dan Quater, our guidance counselor recently showed to me, um, AP psych is actually moving in the same direction as IB psych. They're beginning to truncate, um, what we are doing and they are adding the undertone of depth to it. Um, so I'm a little, uh, leery of that because now there might be a little bit of redundancy on, in what I'm doing over those two years. Um, but yeah, in terms of both courses, I can't say much more than what Matt did. I mean, you have one course where it's depth, it's authentic in assessment. Um, you don't have to know as much in IB compared to AP psychology. I can just speak to that course, I can't speak to other courses. Uh, but I know in teaching, uh, AP for ten years and IB for nine, that, you know, we're covering nine units, uh, in AP. From an introductory and a history of psychology to sociocultural psych, to bio psych, to cognitive psych, everything. Uh, and in IB psych, it's three core units with three or four mini units from the game. Um, you know, in terms of AP, again, preparation for college, uh, obviously the study, the study skills, stamina. Um, the ability to time manage is certainly imperative for the AP. Uh, with the IB, uh, it's critical thinking, it's being able to communicate. Uh, it's being able to, like Matt was saying, apply, apply what you're learning in an authentic setting. So, um, both certainly have their, uh, their merits. And I think that's why some students are attracted to one rather than the other. They know what they're getting into, um, they can certainly, hey, uh, this speaks to my strength. Or, you know, with some students that I have an introduct, um, introduction to introduction to psychology in their sophomore year. Um, hey, I, you're this type of students, I can have that conversation. You're this type of student, you might need this going forward. You know, this AKP, you'll get this and then an IB, you'll get the critical thinking piece, you'll get the communication piece and you'll be ready to rock and roll when it's time.
And we heard a lot of kids speak to that at all of these different settings. The, the students were talking about how usually things are a mile wide and inch deep. That was the third international math science study that came out in nineteen eighty. We're still grappling with this stuff, how many years later. And, um, but they say with IB, going in depth is what they really appreciate. They also talked about the work skills and the stamina and the readiness for college. Cause we had some of our college students come back who are IB diploma students and they really recognize that as a benefit. For that level of independence, there's a lot of choice and a lot of voice and a lot more independence in their work, you know? So I think that's really very good for them to experience, whether they're an AP, IB, or ECE, any of their course or college level. You know, they need to have that, you know, it's almost like stretching the umbilical cord. It's like giving them more, um, you know, leverage and, you know, responsibility in their work. After we've safely, you know, cultivated that, there's a lot of work behind it.
I recognize Andrea. Jordan, something that you just said really gelled for me, what may be the underlying reasons that anybody would sign up for ID or, or AP? And it sounded to me like you were really talking about learning styles. For instance, if you were an abstract sequential like me, you would, you really want to get into the, to the, the depth of it and the critical thinking part of it. If you're a concrete sequential like my husband was, you want the, the, uh, the absolute facts.
Yes, absolutely.
So are you seeing that or that really it's, it's?
Yeah, I, I, I think that's certainly a component, you know, you know, in terms of enrolling students and recruiting them. I remember, uh, I was a sophomore in high school and I think IB was in its second year. Um, and I think it was Mr. Roth who was running the program at the time. Uh, and all of a sudden I ended up in the auditorium one afternoon and I didn't, I didn't know why I was getting called down. I had no idea, I didn't register for anything and I was told, congratulations, you're in the IB program. And I remember looking around the room and going, I, I'm not in the IB program. Um, and for me, I was, uh, one, I knew that about myself. I was more concrete sequential at the time. I wasn't really ready, I wasn't really mature enough to depth yet either. Um, but at the same time, I looked around the room and my friends were not there. I didn't know anybody. Um, so from a, a peer-to-peer, um, you know, standpoint, that scared me. And I didn't want to jump into something where, okay, I knew I was going to be with this group every period of the day for the next two years. And we were going to do everything together and I didn't know anyone else. Um, so I don't know how that plays into it as well, I'm sure it does. I know, uh, you know, diploma candidates build quite a bit of camaraderie, those who make it through. Because just like you'll, you know, with anything, if you, uh, you know, you struggle through anything with a group of people, you know, it brings you closer together. Um, but the answer, I know that, that scared me from just a little personal anecdote there. Um, but yeah, going back to the learning styles, I think that certainly played a role and that played a role for me back then.
And are there, are there any assessments for learning styles in, at the high school? Do students there take some kind of a test that would show?
Naviance. Well, they do some things on naviance, but it's, it's really, it's about just talking to the kids about what these courses entail and seeing if that's something that interests them. And it's also talking about, you know, knowing what you're ready for, you know? I think that Carmine could maybe talk a little bit about the work that the BSU has done, uh, going into, because a lot of these kids feel like that, that's not for me, like the IB, that's for those kids over there. And, 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 you know, one of the things that, um, you know, I was really proud of is when we looked at the kids that did the personal project. And we looked at the kids that did the, uh, did the IB breakfast. We had kids there that were, you know, just a wide breadth of, of students and a wide breadth of interest. You know, we had, we had kids that were really great artists, that we had kids that, you know, are just great at the, the sciences and, and, you know, there were, it's, it's not just one thing. And, and you're right, absolutely, you know, and we said it at the IB breakfast, you know, if you want to go into a class where you just, okay, this is what you need to know. And at the, at the end of it, you take a test and you get the credit or you don't.
So, and my last question is, I'm wondering if there were some kind of a, a learning style assessment that would help? And then you could, the guidance houses could talk because about how, how they learn and, and because if you, if you don't even realize that there's a way that you learn. You know, if you were making choices on, now I see what kind of a learner I am, then.
We do have those types of assessments through naviance and the, and the student success plans. I don't think we've used those so far, but it's, it's certainly great suggestions. Yeah, I don't, we have not actively used them. Um, but I think that, uh, like I said, Carmine, maybe.
Yeah, we just. I'm wondering, I would like to ask the FAS teachers, you know, if they, they utilize some assessments like that. Um, cause I bet, I bet they do, but I can't say for certain.
I was just trying to say, those are the strategies and skills that they develop on what type of learners they are. That's what they were doing throughout the, you know, work and decision-making, I think, as classes.
So we definitely have to salvage that, we want to keep that.
Yeah.
Isn't that part of the NYPD program? So, I think it's part of the NYPD program is that assessment piece.
Well, the concern I have is that it really go over and understand it and understand that there is a way that we all learn differently and use our concrete examples. I'm going to recognize random, sorry. Are we recognized, Pete?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure the, the, uh, the more educated types when I was starting to school knew all about this, but there was never, never anything about different learning style. It was clear, obviously, the kids learn differently, but the question I had is this. Um, isn't that clean? So for example, you identified yourself with one type of learner, your husband and mother type of learner. Is it clean enough so that were we to have a valuation, be able to evaluate kids? Okay, you want, your learning style A, that's for you, your learning style D, that's for you. Or are people really more of a mix? They're fundamentally one, but just to say that that's how they learn and so therefore IB or AP, for example, is appropriate for them.
Oh, no, I wouldn't ever, uh, say, oh, you're an abstract sequential, so you must be an IB, ever, ever, ever.
Right. I'm, I'm, I'm just wondering if we, if it's clean, then an assessment like that to determine what, how kids learn would be better off in this environment would be useful. But if it's not clean now.
It's even situational, because you may learn, you may learn math as a concrete sequential.
Right.
And you may learn things of social studies as an abstract, um, an abstract, but at least if, if, if students understood those things. And even understood that they're, that they are a circumstance, that is situational, I should say.
And we know that our, our high school students, most of them are learning who they are and learning how they learn and so on. So you're going to find that a lot of students are taking both IB and AP. Um, you know, they're trying both and they're seeing what they're more successful in. So it's something where you, we just want to make sure that our students understand what their choices are. And when they are making those choices, what exactly are they choosing? You know, what is the kind of experience they're going to have in a particular class? Uh, because if they're going into an IB chem or an IB English, they want to understand what that means. Uh, as opposed to an AP, which again, most families know what AP English is about. Uh, and also I just say, I want to remind you, Amy McKenna is here to talk a little bit about English, if you have any questions there as well. But, um, but it's something that, uh, you know, it's, that, that's the main focus this year has been on educating our families and educating our students and even educating our staff about IB. Because it's just such an unknown at times.
And I'd like to have Carmine speak to how the students are teaching each other about what's available, because I'm most proud of that.
Yeah, so again, going to our BSU, um, our students, as a matter of fact, we should be going there pretty soon to talk about course selections. But they go in, um, quite often into the CTO. Um, our last, um, push was going to the C, CTO to talk about study scale strategies before the midterms. Previous, it was, um, study strategies for the PSAT, the SAT. Then, then, uh, uh, will we go, uh, next week or sometime, we'll be talking about more, um, more so the class selection. So, but I wanted to also add that, um, I think that's one reason we had a big enrollment in our AP government classes versus our APUSH classes. Because the APUSH classes are more, I'm not to say that students can't, you know, um, understand or, or, or more receptive to critical thinking. But our AP government are Q and A, you know, learning court cases, knowing the facts about these court cases. Whereas the APUSH, those stimulus-based questions require them to know the information, but then be able to apply the information to a series of multiple choice questions, which can be challenging at times. But so, so we are, you know, going to the classrooms and, and introducing or reminding our students, we're dealing with them, what, what we have and what it looks like. And our teachers are going into the cloud for us, you know, our students, what each of their courses, whether it's out there, AP, um, look like, especially for this upcoming course.
Did AP, oh, Liz? Sorry.
Well, I just, ouch, sorry, um. I know that we have increased numbers, which is fabulous. However, I've also heard that, oh, I've heard some students have come to me or their parents have come to me and said, we don't feel like we're getting, the kids are getting the support they need. To make that huge leap, that some, that the leap has been too great. And so I would like to know what's those supports have been in place to help kids who are struggling? Like who have gone from an honors nine, honors ten, or college level ten to an AP eleven? What has helped bridge that gap? What in, what's been happening?
I mean, there's a, there's, there's a lot of supports. I mean, number one, the teacher supports, like always, teachers are, are available if they set up times with those kids to, to work on things. But, you know, it's, it's got to be both of them, um, coming together to, to, to get the support. Um, but I, our IB teachers are, are there just the support. Um, we, we offer the academic success class, which is open to not, not just kids that are struggling. But if a kid is trying to persevere with a, with an AP or an IB class, um, they can have the opportunity to take, take the academic success class as a, um, you know, uh, it's a support class where they, they can get their work done, get support from an actual teacher. Um, should almost like a study hall, but, but, uh, they have the support of a teacher in there. Uh, we have Falcon Academy, which meets, um, Mondays, Wednesdays and Thursdays. Uh, we have teachers and tutors that are available, at least over three each day, three to four teachers or tutors each day. Plus our National Honor Society, uh, our peer tutoring in there, so they have that as support as well. Uh, and then CTO, they, they have that time, which is a very short period of time, but they have that time to connect with teachers as well, uh, with any support.
And all of our IB diploma students are all in the same CTO now. So that they are with either Kelly Donovan or Dr. Andy Rodnick every single day. Uh, they get support there with, you know, the essays and everything else that they have to do. So, um, you know, there's, there's always more ways that we can support, but I think we've really worked hard this year to offer those supports. In addition, the assistant principal meet with their guidance counselors, they all assigned to two guidance counselors. Uh, and they meet with them regularly, uh, to make sure that they are following up on any concerns that they have with particular students, if students are struggling. They're making sure that we're giving them the support. If students are struggling, they're making sure that we're giving them the support and getting them.
So can I just add also, when we do meet with the, the assistant principals, we meet with our counselors and we meet with the students and we recommend that they go to Falcon Rise or send emails to teachers, tell them that they're, that they will meet them during the CTO and pick up the words, the work that's missed. Um, or we call parents and say, we're suggesting that your student goes to Falcon, Falcon Rise. We can recommend it, but then there needs to be a follow through.
Totally understand. I just, um, that's, this has been a, a question that has been posed to me on more than one occasion and then at different times throughout the year. And especially with people who are at higher level, let's say math. And to go to, that they only have Falcon Academy is the only time that they, that's the, it seems to be their time. Is there a person at Falcon Academy that can address their needs if they're in a higher level? And that's just, I'm not asking for an answer.
Yeah.
But I'm just, I want to say, this is the concern that I've gotten from parents. And I just want to make sure that, you know, I, I know you're aware of it, but I feel it's my responsibility of what I do is that, you know, to, to, to voice for their concern that, yeah, we've got these kids all in these higher level classes, but are they getting the support they need?
And I think one thing I want to, yes, there is, but, but we need to be informed of, like if there's someone going to Falcon Academy and they can't get support with their, their math.
There needs big communication.
Then as long as we're aware, then, then we'll work towards finding, even if it's, it's a student, you know, peer support, but someone that, that is strong in that, that subject area, we can find that person and link them up. But we have to be aware that, you know, they're, if they're going somewhere and they're not getting the support they have, because we can't provide a, a tutor in, in Falcon Academy for every single subject that no one's gonna be an expert. For example, I can't really help someone in a French class that well. Um, so we would have to find that support for that, that, and so each, each one's individually, you know, so specific to, we have to be aware and then we can find a way to support them.
Thanks, Matt.
Yep.
I'm gonna recognize Beverly.
Thank you, Kim. Um, I, I, I heard the same concerns that Liz has just brought up. And I, I always said that, you know, if we're gonna push these kids into the IV classes, that we have to really have the support for the kids. Now, I'm not against IV, but I don't really think IV is for everybody. And I think one of the problems we, we have now is that we built the attic without building the foundation. We, we, and the foundation for education is elementary school. So we put all these higher level classes at the high school, but we didn't start at the elementary level where we probably should have started in the first place. And then if we started in the elementary level, it would have just naturally went up. But we didn't do it that way. We put all these high level classes in the high school. Then we found out that the kids weren't taking those classes and the class sizes were low. So now we're in this big push, let's get all these kids in these classes. And some of them are just not prepared for it because they don't have the foundation from the lower levels.
Yeah, Beverly, I, I think I'd like to speak to that real quick, because I think that, you know, a lot of people have been looking at this, like we're, we're pushing kids into classes. Um, you know, we are really making sure that kids know what the options are that are available to them. You know, I can say that, you know, from my end of it, we never told a kid, well, you've signed up for English, uh, 11, but you need to go take IV English 11, we're putting you in that class. You know, we, uh, you know, the kid still needs to make that choice, the family still needs to make that choice. And, you know, but it's really what it comes down to is, I believe, and I, I honestly do believe this, is that our families haven't signed up for IV because they don't know what it is. And, and as simple as that. And, and that, you know, when we, we tell our families, this is what IV is, this is the kind of commitment that it takes. Students will make their choices and we will be fine in terms of our class numbers. You know, what I don't want, I don't want students going into courses they're unprepared to take. What I, what I don't want is for students to be taking courses that are lower than the level they should be taking. Uh, we want students to challenge themselves, the level that they should be challenging themselves. One of the things that we've made very clear is students are not to go into courses that they have not taken the prerequisites for. You know, that a student needs to take the prerequisites for those courses, because we do not want a student go into a course unprepared. Now, do we still need to offer supports? Absolutely. The biggest myth is in, in education is that an AP student or an IV student, those higher level students don't need support. They still need support, uh, because they're taking tough classes. One of the things that we did this year, other support that we put into place is, you know, we have these students, they're taking these, these, these higher level courses, uh, you know, an AP or an IV or whatever it is, and they're, or, or just a regular course load. And they're also doing sports after school, which can be a huge time commitment. And so we are identify, or ban, or all these after school activities. And so we are actually identifying students that are struggling in courses. And we're telling them, and we're telling the coaches, that kid's gonna be late to practice because they are required to go to Falcon Academy. And so we are sending the message that number one, academics come first. If you're not struggling, if you're struggling, you know, if, if, not even at the point where you meet academic eligible, just failing a class or getting a D in a class, you're going to Falcon Academy. And if you miss practice, you miss practice. You know, you have to go a certain number of times that week. So, you know, every week we see the emails coming from Mark Ramato, it's all the coaches saying, here's the, all the kids that need to go to Falcon Academy and they're required to go. Um, and they're not penalized for their, their, their athletics, because they're missing a half an hour practice, because they gotta go do their studies. And so that's a big support as well.
I think one thing I want to add to, uh, so what Beverly said is, is, uh, you know, foundational skills need to be exercised throughout, even in the high school level. And that's something I learned early on, uh, in, in my career as a, as a math teacher. Who, Jan Christensen came in and did unbelievable PD, but he talked about math review and, and it opened up my eyes. Oh, I still need to teach them how to add fractions, because even though they learned it in fourth grade, they didn't, they didn't use it every single day or repeatedly, and they never understood the true concept. So, so that's gonna be a key point of every single lesson is, is going back and, and re, reworking with some of those foundational skills uh, throughout the whole K through 12 experience. And, um, so that's something that we gotta continue to stress to all our teachers, um, to include that in, in the lesson structure.
I'm gonna recognize Dean and then William.
Well, um, Beverly voiced what I've been thinking for a long, long time. It's phenomenon, I'm not saying it's phenomenon here, it's just a general phenomenon throughout um, primary and secondary education that you have different schools. I don't go anywhere where somebody goes K through 12 and it's a single actual programs divided up by, by age groups. Full round, you know, with the, with the middle, middle school. Um, I think when my wife went to Fishman, high school was three years. Yeah, they went, they went west, they went six to, it went seven to nine, basically. So, other than that, it's always been sort of three distinct silos with sometimes the hope, the expectation, sometimes it's work, but the things are linked together and the light is, spotlight is usually on high school. Because now the kids are older, now we're not painting with crayons anymore. It's a stereotyping. Um, they're going out in the world or a virgin, they're going to college, you win trades, it doesn't matter. Now, we, now we get pretty serious about what they're learning. This is when we discover, that's the primary school preparedness and so on. So I'm curious. Um, I mean, it's, it's something you have to put work into. You can't assume that because a kid went through from K to five and then six to eight, that they're ready to go in high school. So, um, I know if I ask, I'll be told, yes, we in fact do that, we ensure that there is firm linkage between all three of the, the levels. But we're dealing with human beings, kids. And, um, you know, they're gonna be imperfections. So I expect that there's, that there's gonna be kids who arrive at high school who could have been better prepared, uh, are not prepared, will need support. Uh, part of it is just the nature of mass education, you got a room full of kids instead of a one-on-one. Um, and part of it has to do with the, the kids themselves, kids that have put in the work. They don't put in the work, they're not gonna get, but they need to get out of the course and they will suffer for it as they go forward. Fractions is one, one example. But I have seen ever since I was in school, colleges administering remedial classes. You know, gatekeeping exam, where are you going when you get, now that you're a freshman, thinking. They know that, they have to know this little bit of math and some people don't even ask that. How do they get into college? And then employers that have this remedial program, the levels aren't talking to each other or the, we're not, we're not doing what we're supposed to do. Are we in fact doing everything that we can at the primary level to prepare the kids for the secondary level? You'll say yes, but that's, that's always been one of my concern. I don't think we're pushing kids into these higher programs. Um, I, I agree that it's good to enlighten them and let them know what's going on. Um, but, uh, that, that is a concern of mine, are you ready to go when you get to high school? As many of the kids as possible, as much as possible. And a lot of that is on that person too. More common than the question.
I was about ready to say, can you let me know what the question is, be underneath that, but.
I get the comment.
I think. William and then Matthew.
And so I actually just wanted to recognize the programs, the IV program, the ECEAP programs, the honors and just the, the regular classes. The, and I hope we continue with the, what we've noticed with both my kids and their friends is that the schedules are very flexible. So if somebody recognizes that they're in an honors, you know, math class, but they recognize that, you know what, I, I, I could be doing more, that the IB math class is also available at that same, you know, period. And so they don't have to change their schedule dramatically and that's a great thing. And so they wind up taking the, uh, you know, switching into the IB program. Or they recognize that maybe an AP or an IB program is maybe a little bit too much for them and, you know, and there are honors programs that are available during that same scheduled time. So I think that's, I, I want to recognize that that's a great thing that we have, um, that the school is doing is, is providing that scheduling flexibility. Um, you know, having various levels of classes available in those specific times so that students don't have to dramatically change their, their entire schedule if they want to, you know, elevate their curriculum by going into an IB or an AP from a regular class or recognizing that they maybe, you know, want to move into a class that is below the IB or AP. So, uh, I think that's a great thing and I hope we continue, uh, to, to have that built into the schedules.
Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you very much, Kim. Uh, I have two discrete items that I think are related to this. The first is, uh, I am absolutely delighted at the breadth and the depth of the advanced classes we're talking about. I do want to point out that based on what our Board of Education agenda items have been over the last year or so, our focus has been largely on higher level classes and higher level education. And I would like to respectfully suggest that we kind of look at the teeter totter and have a discussion in the near future about career oriented programs that we have. Uh, because we need to make sure that all of our students and all of the families and our voters know that we do have something here for everyone, and we do. It's particularly important to me from my perspective that in addition to the military preparation class that we're offering, which I consider an advanced class, uh, EB and the defense industry in Connecticut have some great opportunities for kids who do not want to go on for formal, uh, post-high school education. The unions that are very strong in this area offer us an opportunity, I think, to find out what kind of trade, uh, opportunities we can do for our kids. Building our internships, which I know we're doing, I'm not criticizing, I'm just saying, post-high school specialized training, Connecticut has a school for aircraft mechanics. You know, we, there, and I believe there are probably some other post-high school trade oriented training programs that we should also be letting our students know as available paths for them. This is in no way a criticism of what's been said tonight, not at all. It's just saying that I think we need some additional balance in what we're communicating. May I segue to my second point?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Let's see if I can find the right sheet of paper. Okay, the first point that was made this evening was that families need to know all the options. To, and that faculty and students need to know all the advanced options. I absolutely agree. Now, each person hears that through his or her own filters and one of my filters is communications. So, you know, uh, we at the Communication Committee are in the process of developing a uh, draft district communication plan. We're still a couple of months out from getting it to you. But I, it, it, I would just like to share a couple of channels that we're considering, this is not a done deal, and invite the board members or anybody else to get in touch with Liz, William, Phil, Rebecca, or myself with any additional ideas they think we should be considering. Some of the communication channels that we have already broached, again, nothing has been formalized. Special, and there is no hierarchy in the order of this, these are just bullet points, there's no order to them at all. Uh, peer-to-peer communications, does that mean student videos? Does that mean reinvigorating a student newspaper? Is there some other peer-to-peer communication activity we can do? A quarterly superintendent newsletter, is that something that we should consider doing? Um, special evening meeting where we would have focus on an element of education that hopefully would be of interest to bring out 30 or 40 people. Whether we do it at the district office, whether we do it at the high school or whether we take it on a roadshow three times a year, something like that. Uh, newspaper articles and/or paid placements in the Grotton and Mystic Times. These are just a few ideas. The, the key is resources for, uh, oh, and additional resources if we're gonna do these stuff for our communication person. So these are just a couple of ideas that we're not gonna discuss tonight, but I would like us, Kim, if, if we could maybe discuss this at some time in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I, I have a segue a long time ago off of, I think Beverly and Liz's comments around. And just to, um, I'm gonna step back. Um, we've heard, the board has heard, and also the board as a whole are concerned about, um, the discussion that is around, and Amy, I'm hoping that you can kind of help us because, um, the honors English class was what was, um, uh, very much noted. Um, but that there is, there is a concern about the, it's too much of a gulf between kids who are taking honors English 10. And there's nothing, there should be an honors 11. Um, um, and if we were to take, if we were to have, encourage our students to either take AP or IB, the, the, the steps necessary to go from an honors class to an AP or an IB English is too big. And we've had, um, our public hearings, people have come to talk about it. We as a group have come to talk about it, which is really wrong. It's an agenda topic because that's what we wanted and, um, I, so that is one. So let me just give out my, my other points. My second is, 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 I mean, I've, I've lived in this community for multiple years. All three of my children have gone, have been Fitch graduates. Um, and, um, I knew nothing as a parent about IB. Um, and, um, it really wasn't until my fourth or fifth year on the board that IB though was talked about quite a bit. Um, didn't necessarily mean anything on this level. Um, and, um, it really wasn't until the previous superintendent, along with the then assistant superintendent, um, to really raise up the idea about what IB is. We are now having a campus that's six through 10, correct? Which is a NYPD, which is an IB program. So I'm hoping that there is some unity and some threading around the campus stuff that our parents in elementary school are going to be able to start hearing about. When we talk about IB, it's not an elitist program. All it is, is helping you go de, go, go dirty. Right? Go down and dirty, to be a critical thinker, to, to be innovative. Right? Go down and dirty to be a critical thinker, to to be innovative, to be independent. What?
A communicator.
And as you can tell, I should have taken that. But but that also just to, and so, so that's another thing. And I don't know if the community, the reason why people are thinking this gap is so big between honors, and once again, I'm going to say English because that that has been brought up for several years now. The honor that there's no honors eleven or twelve, and they want, they want us to institute that back again. And if not, the gap between going from an IB AP is just too big. Or did I cover that point correctly in terms of what has been brought to concerns? Okay, I just want to make sure. So now that, now that we have our our experts, either on Zoom and here in person, I I kind of want to hear that because I'm your voice. I am one of nine who are your voice, and if I can't communicate it, I don't, I mean, Liz would be able to do it as a former IB teacher. And coordinator. I, I'm just. So there we are.
So, Amy, are you there?
Yeah, hi. Good evening, everybody. I am here.
Hi, Amy. It's good to hear your voice.
Wonderful. It's it's good to be with you. So I can, I can provide a little of a history lesson, which is, I think, a daunting task with Ms. Hodge and Mr. Panucci in the room. Regarding regarding honors English at Fitch High School. I've been involved with the English department. I began there in nineteen ninety-six, and as most of you know, I have been in some other districts as well. But I've been back at Fitch now for the greater part of ten years. And we ha- we have had different levels of English class throughout those years. But in my experience, since nineteen ninety-six, we've never had honors English eleven or honors English twelve. They have not been in our course catalog. Certainly, there were other levels back in nineteen ninety-six when I began. There were four levels. It was basic, general, college and AP, and then IB was added. So I think what we have witnessed over time with our work with Niask and our work with the National Urban Alliance was sort of like this, this effort to provide access into higher level classes and to sort of like, sort of like slim down with the level of tracking that was going on in most American public schools for a period of years. So now the levels that are offered at grades nine and ten are college level and honors level. And after honors ten, the next course in the progression has always been, in my experience, again, since ninety-six, AP, AP eleven. So you would have a student that was that began in honors nine as an English freshman, honors English nine, honors English ten, and then they would go on to AP eleven and then to AP twelve. Now, of course, now we are AP UConn. We are duly enrolled as a UConn ECE with our advanced placement classes. And right around two thousand one, two thousand two, I think that was the first school year where we began to establish IB diploma candidacy. And that's when the IB program, the teachers were being trained, and IB English was also added for grade eleven, I think, first, and then obviously those students had it for two years, and then it was on in grade twelve. So the the question of reinstating honors English eleven or honors English twelve maybe isn't really the question, because we didn't have it to begin with. I guess that's what I'm trying to say quite plainly. Certainly, if if there are questions about readiness, right now, we have five sections of AP, UConn, ECE, eleven, and we have two sections of IB English eleven, and our our section sizes are robust. I'm quite proud of them, and I'm not going to lie, I'm the department chair, and I'm very proud of the sizes of the classes and also of the students within those classes that are accessing the supports that Mr. Kelleher and Mr. Brown and Ms. Hodge talked of with extra help in CTL, the Academic Success Class, and the Falcon Rise Academy After School Tutoring. Our our students are working hard and they are succeeding. So certainly, if if we do want to look at changes in what we're offering to students, then I think that the department and the Assistant Superintendent of Schools and the and the Fitch Building Administration were certainly willing to open that conversation. But these aren't classes that are to be reinstated. They are, they would be classes that would be beginning. I guess that's my point.
So Amy, thank you for the historical perspective because that that helps me out quite a bit. So I'm not quite sure if it's a position of the board. I can't speak for the whole board. I can speak for only myself on this. Is I'm not necessarily thinking that we need to reinstate a, not reinstate, to create, create a level for English for eleventh and twelfth graders. I guess, once again, is there a huge leap between honors ten English in your AP or ECE or any other of the advanced placement classes? I'm going to recognize Liz Amy before you talk.
I also think there's the question is, and I think this is another part of it. Do we have students that are in college prep? Are we tracking college prep nine, college prep ten, and then is the leap between college prep ten into an honors eleven too great? Not honors eleven, I mean AP eleven or an IB eleven. Is that too great? Because maybe it's maturity, and maybe it's other things that have occurred in their lives, and now that they want to challenge themselves, however are the foundational skills in our, in our ninth and tenth grade, especially tenth grade, there to allow the leap to, from a college prep into an honors level. And I think that's one of the questions is, well, my kid isn't ready for honors, I mean, AP or IB in eleventh grade because they haven't taken an honors ten English class. So I think that might be, that's part of the issue.
I honestly think that would be the same as a college nine leaping into an honors ten. Once you make that leap, that's a leap, and it's going to be a challenge. Whoever makes it, and our honors level class is our IB or AP classes. You know, the the kids, if they, if they follow through our progression and they take honors nine, honors ten, honors eleven is AP. If it is IB, that's that's exactly what it is. So, yeah, that that jump is going to be tough, but that's expected. You know, you're jumping from a college level to an honors level.
And can I add, and I'm thinking about social studies. The reason why we have tenth grade AP US History is because the students want it. It was initially an eleventh grade class, but the students felt that they had the ability to take the class or enroll in the class, so they decided to offer it to tenth grade students. So now here we have ninth grade college, ninth grade honors, and we have both ninth grade and college ninth grade students selected to enroll in the AP US History class.
And AP psych is very popular too. With tenth graders as well, right?
Yeah, I have sixty-three right now.
I think it's the point is, is whatever, it doesn't matter where the leap occurs, that when the leap occurs, it's going to be difficult, and we have to help build that resiliency, which I know you do. All right, I'm not saying that you don't. What I'm saying is, I think that's part of the issue is people who have chosen and have been, you know, first put in, okay, it's, you know, this, they were, it was recommended you take the college prep for this level, and then in tenth grade, college prep again. But they've grown, and then to make that leap from college prep into AP IB, that's.
I I can speak to our department because we just run through recommendations and you know, it started with Ms. Hodge and what we started to do in our, in our push to make sure that we were getting the right students that we thought could handle AP into the AP class, especially ninth graders. And we we look at that, and this year especially. A lot of my colleagues, any of them, here's a college prep kid, they can do the work, you think they can handle it? Let's, let's get him into AP. Let's give him a shock. And I can speak from my own experience this year. I've had quite a few students who struggled in the onset. And my conversation always with them is keep, keep grinding it out. Let's, let's, let's find some grit. I have one who spoke to his, his school counselor like at least three times. And Mr. Marine and I went back and forth, and we convinced him to stay, and he's, he's better for it. He started with a D, he's up to a C, and that is, that might not seem a huge game for others, but for him, that's tremendous. And he will be better for it. So I know it's something we discuss quite often, I mean, especially in this recommendation process in the last two weeks, we certainly.
I'm going to recognize Amy and then William.
I thank you so much, Kim, for recognizing me, and I just to kind of grow the comment that Mr. Panucci did begin. Our, our students, we care such a great deal about them, and when, when I, I'll be honest, I am also an AP teacher in grade eleven. I have several of the college ten students that Ms. Porter is referring to, and they have been grinding it out, and I am so very proud of them, and I think that they, they come up to us when they level up to IB or AP from the college level. We, we talk to each other at these meetings during recommendation time, and and we make sure that the tenth grade teachers inform us, yeah, I'm sending somebody up, look out, I want to talk to you about my student, and then furthermore, they'll, they they circle back in September, October, November, hey, how is, how is this student doing? Let me know. He's coming in and asking me questions as well, or she has stopped by my room to show me this paper she's working on. So the, these are young, young men and women that are under our care. I just want to make sure that the the board recognizes that. And furthermore, just on another sort of side of this, and I know that not all of our classes in the high levels are the early college experience classes for the UConn ECE. However, they are providing students with college-like experiences, and I think there's such great value in that. Last week, I had to meet with my psych coordinator at UConn, and he said something that I think is so remarkable when I reflect upon it for this conversation this evening, and he said, you know, at UConn, everybody takes UConn English ten, you know, English ten oh seven, that particular class, which we offer to seniors. It doesn't matter what level they were in in high school. They all have to take freshman English. And he said, you know, generally in the ECE classes, it's only the top kids get to take those classes. And that made me rather proud because I reflected upon how things work at Fitch. And certainly, it's not just the top kids. We're always, you know, reaching a hand to bring kids up and the work of the BSU trying to get students to challenge themselves to the, to these classes with which the students really belong in these classes. They may not, they just may not have the confidence yet. Or maybe somebody didn't ask them to level up when they, when they were in eighth grade, so here they are still in college ten, but boy, they could have leveled up a lot earlier. So I just think that if we look at the end game here, and we think about these are going to be students that are going to be exiting Fitch High School and going off to military or career or to UConn, they're going to be sitting in these classes, and I'm happy that we're offering a lot of students a chance to be ready because they tried them out with us first in a caring environment over a full year, not over a semester.
So Amy, never would I think, actually, as being a parent of three children who went through Fitch specifically, I always believed that it was a village that I needed help to to raise my children, or they needed their parent to have help raising them, and I always felt that very much that the Fitch staff were very caring and very loving, not only just to my children, but to all. So that's not an issue for me. Once again, what the, what the issue that that's on there, and William, I promise I will recognize you next, is is that the board is hearing a lot about the jump between honors, honors ten. I now feel like, thank you very much. I feel like I now have words where I can talk about that your honors classes, like, it's a project, it's a trajectory, and your trajectory after honors ten, whether it's English, math, social studies, or science, is you take either an AP for English, I'm going to say English because can't have that many topics in my head, would be ECE, it would be AP or IB. Is that correct? Okay, and that if someone's struggling, there needs to be, which was the, your earlier part of your conversation, Matt, was like, people just have got to communicate, and we expect the rigor to be, it is a leap. It, there is a, but that, that's okay. Because that's all part of sort of figuring out what type of learner. See, I can cycle everything. What type of learner you are and what you need in order to be successful, right? Do I have it?
You do.
I'm going to recognize William.
No, you guys covered everything. I I just, yeah. No, I I don't, no comments anymore. Thank you.
Sorry, William. I hope I didn't take that away from you.
Can I also ask for Amy? Amy was instrumental when Common Core came along, or Connecticut Core, in bringing her team together and developing what is a core curriculum for college level. And that really is the foundation of what we use for an honors level. You know, might have a few more assignments. Amy, you can speak to that, but that really raised the bar. We, and we did that for elementary school and middle school and high school so that that Connecticut Core, those standards would be utilized for every child. So, but then we added some to that when we brought it to an honors level. Amy, did you want to say anything about that?
No, I mean, I think you spoke to that quite well, and I do think that, you know, that's something to be recognized as well, is that our, our students are being taught to the same standards, and at at the beginning of the year, what do we do? We take the student where they are, and we move them forward. We continuously move them forward, and I think that's done in all of our, our special areas and in our core academic areas. You know, we want to see the students grow. And I do think that at all the levels offered in in the English department, you know, we, we work with the individual student and and we help them grow as much as possible, and perhaps the biggest difference with, you know, between grade levels or high level to honors to college, you know, is the pacing and, you know, the amount of support that might be needed may vary per student, but certainly, the support is there. The student just needs to access it, and we're, we're always happy to give it.
Thank you, Amy. Are there any other questions for our high school Jay?
Actually, just a quick comment. I just want to thank everyone from the high school for coming out two different nights and spending these hours with us after months of going through budget. It's great to be hearing about what's happening in the schools, and we really appreciate your time in helping us understand these issues more deeply. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Well said. Really, I, like what he said. Thank you so much for, Amy, thank you for being online with us and also for you guys to come out. I, I, I think, Jay, you said it perfectly. We, we have just been hungry to hear about what's happening in the district because next week, we are going, we are back on the road again to defend our budget. And so it's nice to, to hear the good work that you guys are doing. So thank you very much, and I'm sure you don't want to stay for the rest of it. But we're moving on.
Good night. Thank you very much.
They live it every day, yes. All right, so we are moving.
Maybe if the board had went through training about IB, they would be a little bit more able to speak to it. Because I know I'm the only one trained that I'm aware of on the board. And I know Jay's son has gone through IB, but there is training available for Board of Education through the International Baccalaureate. And maybe that's something that's really necessary because you don't have the trained board members anymore.
And and actually, and and every two years, there's an opportunity for a huge change in your board.
And that needs to, we need to keep that consistent. How can you?
That's a great idea. That's a great idea.
You know, how can you?
Especially within middle years, especially with, we are a middle years um, campus, so that is. Good idea, ma'am, good idea. Alright, Mr. Kilpatrick, we now have time for you.
Great, good evening.
Good evening. So the reason, so the reason why we have you here tonight is that instead of hanging out with us last Monday. You got to hang out with the town staff and look at our capital, capital improvement projects. Um, and so we asked you just to come back and just do a little bit of reporting now.
Yep, so uh, last Monday, Dr. Kennedy and I reviewed the three items that were put forward by the town manager. To the planning commission that will then move forward to the town council. Um, after those discussions, I think we feel pretty confident that all three of the items that we discussed were gonna move forward, so.
I would concur.
Three items, uh, were uh, security cameras, uh, mutual link, uh, in the Fitch High School sewer project. Also, we, we, um, I, I talked briefly before the meeting about the culinary arts project, but that was not on the list. So it wouldn't come up for discussion during that meeting, however, uh, we received an email from uh, town manager Bert. That we can actually, the board can actually bring that up when we meet with the town council uh, to discuss our CIP. So if we're adamant that we wanna get that uh, into the CIP, we need to bring that up at, at that meeting at that time.
And the reason behind the culinary arts program was because of the price tag, is that correct?
My understanding from, from emails from uh, John Bert, it appears that, well, he's. He, he has X number of dollars to work with and he spreads it out amongst all the departments around the town, so. I think, well, from his perspective, I think uh, it was the money that knocked that along.
And I think you have heard from a couple, not a whole lot, but a couple folks on the RTM. Um, and in town that, well, you have Grasso Tech, so if you wanna go be a chef, just go to Grasso. But we have a lot of students who wanna be at Fitch and also want a career pathway, that's why we're implementing career pathways of all kinds. And restaurant business, if you haven't heard, in this area can be a, a very good career pathway for our kids. So, um, and it's a very popular course, Jim.
Liz.
Um, Sam, what about the football field?
It didn't make the cut.
Again.
We, wait, wait, let's be, let's be clear about, we added that, not the culinary arts program. But we added the bleacher and the. And the field house, because we, it was in a way, the board making a statement.
Right.
That we have had these things with the, the field on our, the CIP list for. I know, well, I know it goes back before you. Um, um, and so that we were just trying to sort of like.
Right.
These are in need, these are, these are concerned. And my, my other understanding and um, Jay, maybe you can speak to this, is that. The um, the field committee has sort of encapsulated that, those pieces of Fitch. The football field, the um, field house and the bleachers, and the bleachers as part of their ultimate design.
I just, I wanted to clarify like.
Yeah, no, that's great, I'm glad that you asked.
Yeah, I would say the bleachers are excluded because they did talk about the possibility of actually um, switching the field ninety degrees. So it went to east, west versus north.
Jay?
Uh, yeah, and just a, a little more clarification, and Sam, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but. These items are of such a high value that they would have to be bonded. Which is a totally different process than the capital improvement process. And while we did send a message that these are priorities of ours. They follow a different path when they go over a certain price tag.
It, it goes, um, Jay, are you saying it kinda goes on back to what Sam talked about, which is. That there's only X amount of dollars that are, that are for CIP projects and that one is way above and. We're talking about millions and millions of dollars for the field and.
Was also talking about the maximum price tag for some of these too, because. Uh, the bleachers, for instance, were almost two million dollars and that would not fit into the CIP. Parameters, uh, the thirteen million dollars for a field house doesn't fit into that, that would be a separate project from. A CIP, that wouldn't be a CIP, a CIP project either.
They could all be combined now.
The.
To be bonded.
The field itself, um, we talked about uh, redoing the football field itself. Um, regrading that, uh, that, that price tag was in the two hundred and fifty thousand, that, that could meet it. But again, it's part of the overall um, project of redoing the, the. The football facility, maybe bleachers, field house, hold it.
Um, do you wanna speak to the mutual link and the security cameras? Is there, is there information that you can talk about that, uh, cause we are recording that doesn't, um.
As far as a change in status?
Yeah.
We've been through, really, there's, there's no change in status, as we mentioned when we went, met. We briefed them on, as we briefed this group, you know, with that, those three tiers that we've talked about, kind of the foundational piece for cameras. Making sure that we're updating those schools on par with the new schools that we have. Second tier, which is really that unifying level, right now, we have. Uh, at our three new schools, some wonderful cameras and the ability to manage those and look at them and so forth for admin staff. The police, if they, if we allow them in, which we do, if there's an emergency and they can access and so forth. But the second tier unifies all of our buildings together and then also allows for access outside physically of the building. So if they, if a cruiser pulls up and there's an ongoing incident, they can access it from their squad car or a phone or what have you. The third layer really being that mutual link layer, that is a separate CIP request. Which would then allow us, if there is an incident, to activate in one channel for the designated people. The cameras, the voice channel, the appropriate people, the location laid out on a map of the school and so forth. So again, those are our three tiers of our cake, if you will, which CIP would provide foundational la-. Layer to get equitable cameras and systems across all schools. Second layer, merge that all together with software so that Susan can look at it, Sam could look at it, the police could access it. Fire department could access what they want. Third tier is that mutual link piece, which gives us an efficient way to leverage all those channels. To get done, hopefully what they can get done, should there be an issue.
It was pretty well, uh, Clint made it pretty clear to them that the, the cameras are, are um, like the first step. You, without the cameras that he needs, mutual link will not give us what we want, so it's, it's, it's a.
It builds on itself, as opposed to pick one of three or something.
But we, we had a good conversation, positive uh, comments on, on those, uh, on those two items.
I think the homeland security, um, feature that we had accomplished the audit. Was really powerful and that was one of the recommendations and we're hoping to do the same thing at Groton Middle School with this homeland security audit. So.
And, and the third item that uh, we talked about was the Fitch High School sewer repair. Um, which is in for seventy-five thousand dollars and again. Positive comments from them regarding moving forward with it, but I, I haven't actually seen anything yet. I, I don't know if they've reported that to town manager or town council yet, but pretty. I, I feel pretty confident that they're gonna move that forward.
I didn't know what that was.
But we have the sewer repair project at Fitch High.
Thank you. And I don't think you're gonna be available though on the night of the CIP discussion, you'll be on vacation.
I'll probably be there.
Well, you're supposed to be with your grant kids.
Only an hour difference.
That's right, he can, he can zoom in. And Dr. Kenzie will be there.
He was about taking out vacation with them.
I know Sam would not take me on. So, um, my question is, um, what does, wow. I'm gonna try this one more time, is where, where does the board stand in terms of the, the culinary arts project? And what do we want to, do we want to engage in a conversation with the town council? Are we just gonna make the assumption or just to say, okay, so the town manager has taken it off, so there we go. Um, like where, where does the board stand on this? It's not gonna go back on. He, no, I, I didn't mean that, why would he tell us this?
No, he indicated that we can ask them to put it back on the list.
So we could have a conversation with the town council if we so wish. That's not, that's, their boss is the town council. Yeah, well, that's what I mean, why would he sell us?
No, I, I think we're pointing out that, that he, he's taken it off for his budget of town manager. Town council can take things out of his budget, put things into the budget, when it becomes their budget. The RTM likewise.
Not unlike what we can do. I get it, thank you, thank you. Matthew?
I would not object at all if the other board members felt the same way for us to respectfully ask them to consider it. The very worst thing they can do is decline our request and it will have made it very clear that we will be coming back again. So if we do have to come back again another year, we've at least not gonna get bumped next year.
William?
Uh, I completely agree, I mean, we need to offer, you know, this to our students, they can't say that the student can go to. Another school to do it, cause then if that's the case, then they are supporting that we can send our students anywhere they want. Because they want specific classes, so we'll have that put into their budget then. If they are supporting that they can, need to go to a different school, then we'll ask them for more money so that we can send kids to. You know, all these other different schools to take specific classes, so they need to support the students at Fitch. And so I, I believe we need to, to ask for this to be put back on.
Thank you, William, Liz?
Yeah, I agree, um, and the comment about, well, just send them to Grasso, Grasso has limitations. And they takes only certain, have percentage of students from Groton because they have New London, Norwich, NFA, whatever. I'm not sure where they come from, but Grasso Tech takes in kids from all over southeastern Connecticut. So Groton only gets a small portion, it's not open enrollment that we offer our children.
We have so many that really wanna take it, I would say that's the thing that I see is that we can't even service our own kids. But with this, we have half a chance and, and making it a semester course for the beginning, food's one. Um, we have a half a chance of those students who are really interested being able to have a taste of foods. Dee?
Um, as a question, a question. Not totally on board with no harm in asking. Is it possible, throwing that out, is it possible that in asking, the council might come back and say. Did you want it that badly, what are you willing to give up for it? So let's think that through first, maybe nothing. I may not think along those lines, now that. But it's impossible, if I were on the council, I'd say, oh, you wanted that badly?
Why didn't you budget?
Why didn't you find it something else?
Andrew, and the other thing is, if you don't ask for it, and then you come back several years later, it's, it'll be like. Why didn't you ask for it beautifully? So you gotta think of human.
Just like the football.
Well, I'm also thinking that it needs to become part of our narrative in terms of the fact that it's part of our. Career, a, a potential career program, plus we are also offering Matthew, just like you talked about. Is, is that we do spend a lot, we have spent a lot of time on IB, AP. Um, in our advanced courses, um, and our culinary arts program. Could be such a gift for students, actually of any, um, any of our students. Um, and also does fit the need for kids who don't see themselves as wanting to go on for higher education. Or at least not higher education yet, um, and so I, I think that that needs to be part of that. Um, Jay?
Yeah, I think it's important that they understand that even though it didn't make the cut. At the town manager's level, that it's still a program that we um, fully support and it, it. It is a capital improvement, you are renovating a portion of the building. Um, generally speaking, that's not paid out of operating budgets, it, it is truly a capital improvement. And so they can, uh, you know, see, you know, wh- what funds they have available and what, what the priorities are. What the other CIPs are in town and um, then they can make the decision, but at least we have advocated. Um, for those students, you know, who wanna pursue that program.
Thank you, Jay. William?
So again, it, it, the program is essential, you know, when we're trying to represent, you know, the students and help them. We're also representing the town to say, you know, we have an excellent school system and this is why you want to move here, this is why you want to live here. You know, if you look at Stonington, Jacques Papin was just there last week, you know, with their culinary program. You know, and their culinary, you know, facilities are, are excellent, you know. We wanna be able to say that we have that too and that we could support that and that we offer that as well, you know, so. I, I, I think it's really a, an important thing.
I could even offer a walkthrough in the vintage wing. So that anyone on the town council or the RTM who'd like to see the vintage wing of Fitch. And where we are with our career pathways and what our hope and aspirations are. I mean, this is just the beginning of what needs to happen. Jay, do you have another question or a comment?
No, well said.
Thank you.
Um, with, uh, when we do go to, to the town council, um. Years ago, a board member used to go with the, with facilities director, uh, and the superintendent to actually talk to them.
Good idea.
I think it's al- also, I mean, when we go as staff, we're talking as staff and it's, um, they look at us as a staff promoting this. Whereas the elected officials, if they're speaking positively about it too, I think that can help uh, this move along.
Well, I mean, I think the whole board is meeting in front of the town council, wouldn't be just that, yeah, it's not the same night. I think it's the.
Third of April.
Third of April is our budget, but then there's another one that is the CIP. You sent it away. So third of April is town council meeting regarding the budget. And then um, I have that, we have negotiations on April fifth. Right, I had mentioned. So was it Tuesday that would be the town council? No, it was the same day, it was, it was the same, the, the, the town council CIP was the same night as negotiations. Oh, that's right. I sent that in my. Yeah. In my email.
Is that gonna be a conflict, it's gonna?
Yeah, so we have the, I mean, so we'll, we'll talk about that tomorrow morning, but alright, I just wanted to make sure that I got the tenor of the board. I think, um, I think we got it and, um, and thank you. So Matthew, the next agenda item is the, um, I hope I caught. The gist of what you wanted to talk about?
I think you did.
Okay, so, um, thank you, and I appreciate your smile. Um, so I know that, um, at, and, and Beverly, this might actually go back to the time. That you were on the board previously, um, before me. That there was a liaison meeting that existed with the superintendent, the board of ed. Um, members and the PTOs of the different, um, of, of the buildings in the district. Um, and um, that was, at the beginning, was attended pretty well. But then, um, it left the docket, um, not unlike the communication committee. Um, left the docket, um, and so, um, what I'm hearing. Um, and Matthew, I'm gonna let you take over, like, why am I talking for you?
Uh, you keep talking all you want, that'd be great. Okay, so the idea of reinstituting the board PTO liaison is a key element. But not the only element in why we're coming to the board tonight. Uh, I've attended a couple of PTO meetings, uh, not all of the PTO meetings. And what I observe is that whether we, and, and by PTO, I also want to include the high school booster clubs in this, in this uh, thing. So we, we were talking about. is that whether we, and and by PTO, I also want to include the high school booster clubs in this, in this uh, thing. So we were talking about booster clubs and the PTOs. They may need to be treated separately or possibly together. That's to be defined. But they all have the identical mission as far as I can discern. And that is to provide supplemental enrichment for our students. That's the common mission and unifying force. There's also another key thing that there's a, there appears to what I'm able to discern, a universal challenge in getting parental engagement in these organizations. So with a common, common mission and a common challenge, that frames the idea that we have discussed at communication about inviting the leadership or inviting leadership to invite all of their members or just select for themselves whomsoever they want to attend a hybrid meeting to assess parental interschool collaboration between the board and the PTOs individually and collectively. Some of the things, this is not to be a directive meeting, it's to give them and the board a chance to assess how we can be useful to one another, or maybe even if we can be useful to one another. I I have my biases, but hey, some of the things that that I've heard mentioned at PTO meetings is avoiding conflicting scheduled con- scheduling conflicts. Uh, sharing ideas or experiential ideas of what has worked for a given PTO and what has been a challenge and let them fertilize, cross-fertilize one another. And then the question of the re-institute instituting the Board of Education PTO liaison. Uh, one of the criticisms of the past I heard, I was not here, was that it was held monthly, and that seemed if I'm hearing correctly, to have been a bit onerous. So whether it be three times an academic year, four or five is really not clear to me, but to have some periodic things that have become less difficult and less onerous for the boards. And uh, at one point, we were going to move ahead to invite the PTO people to come. And our beloved chairwoman has suggested that it might be useful to chat with the board and share our vision and solicit your input before moving forward. And so that's what I'm hoping we'll hear tonight to get your feedback. Thank you.
Matthew, you said much better than me. This is your idea to to come through. What are people thinking? So I I think my understanding, Matthew, in a nutshell, it is to reinstate and maybe it's a, it's a different look to it. But it's, it's reinstate um, communication um, through meeting or whatever between the board, the parent and teacher organizations, booster clubs um, uh, for better communication and understanding about what's happening. It's another way of communicating. It's another vehicle to um, move across. Jay?
So I think what perhaps Matthew's referring to is a organization that was referred to originally as the townwide PTO later morphed into the parent council. And um, ultimately, the parents dissolved it, um, just because there was no um, there was no interest. We would go, the board members would go, several of us with the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, the principal of the school, and sometimes nobody else would show up. Um, I think what could be different now is the adoption of Zoom. So when uh, Matthew says the hybrid option, um, perhaps this is the time to, you know, revive uh, what what was done years ago. Um, and it maybe would be easier than we met at a different school uh, every time we met, and it seemed to be difficult to get um, a large enough group to to create any kind of action. Um, and so, you know, maybe if it's revived a- as a, as a hybrid meeting, um, it would catch on again.
We did have success with the Groton 2020, remember? That Mike really utilized that group and spearheaded some action out of that group. So that was a success story of that, I would say.
Yes, but again, you know, toward the end, uh, when the final parent chair stepped down, no one else throughout any of the PTOs in town uh, was willing to step up. Um, and the parents basically dissolved it for lack of interest. Um, we had a lot of PTOs that had difficulty even uh, getting a quorum. But again, uh, this is a different time now, and with the advent of uh, online meetings, um, perhaps it'd be easier to get more people involved. So I I would encourage it.
William, and then Andrea?
What about if we, you know, assigned a board member to the specific uh, PTOs or, you know, fundraising uh, groups to be their, you know, representative and advocate for the board and for them, and we report out to the Board of Ed about their specific things that are going on, what their needs are, what they're doing. Um, it's my suggestion, possibly.
So William, that um, actually, it's a suggestion, but it's actually something that has had that had been done in the past where a board member was assigned a school. And um, so not just the PTO, but actually the school, and it was their job to kind of, um, come back to the board and report about what was happening in in that actual building um, and stuff. So that has been done before as well. Andrea?
And why was that stopped?
Um, because I I think, I think that at that time, there was a lot of board members that just were, had very, very busy lives and um, I I know, I I will speak for me specifically. Um, I work nine to seven, and so for schools are eight forty-five to three. Um, and so there was just, um, it it just didn't, um, it was hard for people to kind of get involved, I think is what happened.
I can see that.
So so there wasn't consistency. So like, maybe you could go and I couldn't, or vice versa. And so there was not a consistent way. Um, I think it's a great idea, and it sounds to me like this is something what Matthew is, um, and his committee is talking about. Um.
Okay, make a quick fun. And Matthew, correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the purposes too was was to have the 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 leaders together so the PTOs can help each other
Yeah.
and and communicate with each other, not so much just for the board to learn information from them. Is that correct, Matthew?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Um, it it's, again, I I don't want this to come across as our selling a product to the PTO is rather an opportunity for them to decide what, if anything, they feel would be useful in terms of collaboration amongst themselves and with the board.
And certainly, I I've been trying to communicate all the different events at the schools. And I love it when you all have been there and you, you know, chimed in about something you've seen. So I would love for you to be able to attend a lot of these, a lot of our schools, whether it's through a walkthrough, whether it's a band concert, whatever the case may be. Um, Northeast Academy had a wonderful art celebration and many people were able to go. So I'm trying to communicate. So if that's something that you can attend, you can get into all of our schools, so to speak.
Andrea? I'd be in favor of this, or hardly, if it were all Zoom and not hybrid. Because if if it's hybrid, somebody has to be here. And that, that makes it extremely inconvenient. But if we could all get together on Zoom, I think we'd have great participation.
I think, I think, and I don't know if it happened in Groton, but I remember when COVID first hit and PTOs went all Zoom. Uh, my membership tripled.
Yeah.
Um, so it really allowed people to sort of sit in. Again, we're just talking, I believe, also about having representatives of the leadership. Uh, and I think making it Zoom would just make it easier for for everyone, like, like you said. I think it would help with attendance.
I think it's a great idea. Dean?
I did a quick count because I can never keep the number of schools in my head. We have seven building.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Dean.
I'm sorry, there are seven building, which you already know, but I keep forgetting. So there are plenty of board members who want to do an adult school type of thing. Maybe start with the PTO.
Yeah, I I I think, though, what I'm hearing is, is what's the, you know, how, what's the plan? Like, how do you survey the PTO leaders to see if they even would want that? Because I, I guess for me, that would be the first place to go, right?
I did ask that question at the three PTO uh, meetings that I attended. I asked if they felt that this might be u- useful for them. The response from the three PTOs at which I attended was all positive. That doesn't mean uh, that that would be the case universally. And I certainly, uh, I look forward to uh, getting Mr. Keller's uh, opinion and feedback as to whether this should include the, a single meeting for PTOs and booster clubs, or whether the nature of booster clubs is sufficiently different that we should do a se- separate outreach to each. You know, do the, the middle school and the elementary school as one unit and the high school as another. I I'll rely on on the leadership of, you know, the administration to guide us.
Yeah, I mean, I would be all in favor of of offering um, the, uh, the, the suggestion, not me, the board offering the suggestion that maybe the PTO leadership would want to get together and at least for the first meeting, why not have all of those arms together in one meeting and let that body make a decision about um, whether it should be PTO, the structure of that and how often that they meet and how how involved should the board be in that? Um, I mean, I think that that, I think that those questions could be asked, but I, I, I think it's a great idea for um, you know, the chance for us to kind of say, I'm hearing this. I'm wondering what would happen if all the PTO leadership would get together on Zoom and and talk about how do we next year, you know, move forward on a plan about getting together on a more meaningful basis? And what would, what would you talk about? But, you know, what would be the, what would be the things?
I believe Phil ha- Phil has a letter uh, that he is working on, and uh, we can we we can get this rolling. Uh, it's probably too late to do it for this month, Phil. I'll leave it to your judgment.
This month? No, we probably, yeah, we probably have to give him a couple weeks' notice, I would think.
Okay, so we could, we could make that uh, if we're willing to extend the meeting, we can just have a longer meeting one month. Well, we can talk about that later. What?
Yeah, yes, yeah, we can.
We'll talk about that offline.
Thank you, Matthew. As always, moving the board forward. Thank you. Um, our, our next agenda item is our tracking. A lot of the tracking stuff that's not on there is the stuff that is on Susan's and our and my list in terms of making sure we are going through next, this next time we meet um, in the community of the whole, we're gonna be talking about the reading program and and um, Susan's suggestion was um, for us to now go to more an elementary um, focused and maybe we'll pick off anything that's on here that's elementary. Um, and we have, um, Bev, I promise you, the attendance stuff, I think Susan is really just working on that. We just got out of the liaison meeting, um, and there's a high absentee um, rate right now, largely because of the illnesses that are going through our buildings. Um, anything that people want to add, Matthew? I have from yours um, a di- a higher discuss, a longer discussion or a richer discussion around the career-oriented um, classes that are at Fitch. I heard that, um.
That's on the list, I think.
And that's also on our list, and we should have just shoved it on there um, for tonight.
Or we did talk about CP, but we didn't go off to all the career pathways, so.
Um, communication. And then there's the communication, but I don't, I didn't write. I can't have nine conversations.
Sorry.
Um. So, but Matthew, I, you had another thing about communication, and I don't know what it was.
Okay, so I have the two things that are on our communication list now are PTO now goes on the list, and of course, the communication plan should be on the list, and we're working on that. I'm expecting we'll get our updated text this sometime this week. I'm not quite sure what more we can discuss on the mentor program. Uh, if the mentor program would like our assistance in outreach efforts in terms of designing a strategy for outreach, we're willing to do it. But that's really basically, at this point, an administration decision.
That's great. So I'm, for under communications, we're going to put the communication plan and then also on the um, PTO on uh, leadership outreach, right?
Correct.
All right.
PTO and uh, boost.
All right. All right. Anything else?
Well, I have.
Not for me.
Right, Liz?
We have an update on curriculum. Um, we are maintaining our review of English Language Arts Curriculum Grammar and Conventions. We are changing the next one, R two zero two two dash ten to review financial literacy in Gro- Groton Public School um, curriculum, and I think that is in April.
It's gonna happen in April.
April, instead of February. Um, we are changing R two zero two two dash sixteen to review the program of studies for GMS and FHS as ongoing. Take out the words audit. And we're adding review and support update of high school curricula such as in the science, PE, and social studies areas at this time.
Ms. Joan, did you get that?
Science, physical education and social studies at this.
I'll get it from the tape tomorrow.
All right. Thank you, my love.
Ian help.
P E and how, yeah.
Andrea?
I'm looking at this and I'm I see things from two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Let's so, let's put this on our list to to really examine what this is because
all right. I look at the community of the whole all the time. Um, and the nine thousands, do you want to tackle? That's a separate, that's me. Actually, I would like to revitalize that. I think Jay's. And Jay, all right. Um, so the committee of the whole, I think I just need more time with Susan to kind of talk about some of the stuff that's on here. Um, but we did talk about the discussion of Educational Rising Club. We did have that conversation that is um, R two zero two dash nine, do we not?
Yeah, we did.
All right. Um, we haven't had a DEI committee update in a while. Um, we have had discussion of sub-student achievement, um, student achievement by subgroups, but I think that that's also ongoing.
Could I make a comment on that?
Yeah.
Um, at some point, you recall, I had been concerned about the number, the the level of uh, below grade level performance. And if I understood Susan correctly, she said that we have uh, not to be that concerned about that because we have other measures that we're uh, dealing with student performance. But uh, I think it would be very helpful if we could see the metrics that go with those other methods when, when, when it comes up for discussion.
So there is, um, it's almost a continuous year-round process to examine state data. So we still have the growth model and a report card that we can show you. Um, that's very multifaceted, very much like the um, yardstick that Groton used to use. So that's something that is next step, and you're gonna hear more about some of the data we've collected um, in reading K three, for example. So you're gonna be hearing some of that data talk in the pre- presentations that we have coming up in April and May.
Yeah, I I look forward to that because I'm not the only. Yeah, I, I look forward to that because I'm not the only one who's never heard, I mean, heard the title that we have a yardstick, but it's, I haven't had, been exposed to it, and it'll be very helpful to hear that.
Okay, good. I can kind of showcase the stuff that the state is collecting and the items that were on the yardstick.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the referral tracking?
Liz, on the backside for the COW, discussion about the International Department Program, AP, ECE and honors courses.
Didn't we done that?
I think we did that. So I'm saying we need to take that off.
That's, you want to get that course, get an expert in to give the, you know, that would be worth a retreat time, you know, to have, you had said a presentation, an ID.
Oh, that, that would be an addition. We would have IB training for the board. Is that on a COW or would that be?
That would be a special retreat.
Yeah, that, I think that would be a retreat. I don't think it belongs here.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Are we going to have a follow-up retreat from what we had started earlier this year?
Um, it really is up to the will of the board. But it would be nice to have a, an update on that.
Our time, time limited, we didn't get through the agenda. It, it was a rich discussion, but we didn't get through the agenda, just ran out of time.
What about under finance and facilities?
William?
Yeah, I, I agree if we could have a follow-up to that retreat.
All right, Susan and I, I, I have that on our list to chat about, because we like chatting in the morning. That'd be great. Liz?
Finance and facilities. I think we can take off the review board involvement and obtaining a new bus, bus contract. I think that, as we have a bus contract, do we not? A new one?
Well, it's with our returning, should be, should be ready.
All right, so we don't, we need to keep it on there until it.
No, review board involvement in obtaining a new bus contract. We don't need that anymore. That was discussed.
All right, what about any of the other things?
Jay, are you comfortable with the other stuff that's on the tracking sheet?
I honestly don't have that in front of me.
Okay. Maybe that we should put that on our finance and facilities to review it, what's on the list and see what we want to change.
I know, Dean, this is not what we're supposed to do. I hear you. Your voice is in my room.
All right, anything else? I have a motion for Germans. Have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Most abstain. Good night.
Good night, Grace.